The City of Aiken Planning Commission Meeting tonight for Tuesday, June tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Before we get started, let me read the guidelines for public comments for the City of Aiken Planning Commission Meetings. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount, courteous and respectful communication is required. During public comment periods of the meeting, all questions and statements from the public should be directed to the chairman. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and the chairman will recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order for, in order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address the commission, speakers should limit their comments to the agenda item while the application being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue and may only address an issue once unless questions from the commission are posed to the speakers. Okay. Tonight, our first order of business is the approval of the regular meeting minutes of May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, the motion by Commissioner Clarkson. Second by Commissioner C ninety, discussion. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand.
I was saying.
Okay, and the motion passes, the minutes are approved. Okay, item A, our first order of new business tonight is application number two-five dash two zero zero three-one. This is an annexation request for tax parcel number one zero six dash zero six dash eleven dash zero zero five. This is on one thirty Lynnwood Drive. They are currently in the county under residential, single-family conservation and asking to come in the residential, single-family into the city. Is the applicant here tonight to speak on behalf of this application? Are there any, anybody for or against this application? Any comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion from the commissioners.
Mister Chairman, in regards to application two-five dash two zero zero three-one, annexation request for tax parcel one zero six dash zero six dash one one dash zero zero five. Current zoning R C, proposed zoning R S fifteen, I make a motion that we move to city council for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Clarkson, second Commissioner Matthews.
Herb.
Herb, sorry.
Oh.
Y'all can fight about it.
I didn't hear him.
All right, um, discussion. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Okay, item B under new business, this is application number two-five dash two double oh three-two. This is another annexation request for tax parcel number one-two-one dash two zero dash zero three dash double oh five. This is at four-two-four Jehose Jehose Drive Southeast. They're currently in the county under urban development and looking to come into the city under R S six, residential, single-family. Is the applicant here? Yes, ma'am. Could you please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record? Thank you.
My name is Deborah J. I live on four-two-four Jehose Drive, Aiken, Aiken, South Carolina, two-nine-eight-zero-one. I am requesting annexation to the city limits as an individual. The county road that I currently live in is, um, I would be the only one annexing, annexing, annexing into the city limits. So I ask that I be granted that permission because it's just a little bit more cost-effective.
Sure.
See what I'm talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
I would have trash pickup, then I have a garbage disposal, and then it just seems a better fit for me.
Sure.
As an individual, as an individual. So I'm asking that you all grant my wish that I have this be annexed into the city limits.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody here to speak in favor or against this application? Any other comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, in regards to application number twenty-five dash two zero zero three-two annexation request, tax parcel number one-two-one dash two zero dash zero three dash zero zero five. Current zoning U D, proposed R S sixteen, and there are no possible conditions, I move that we send this to city council for approval.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Matthews. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second Commissioner Messina, discussion. All those in favor? And it passes unanimously. The city welcomes your tax money.
You may.
You may.
You got two readings with the city council. Good luck.
You're welcome. Okay, item C under new business, this is application number two-five dash two zero zero three-three. It's an annexation request for tax parcel number one-two-one dash eleven dash zero four dash double oh seven. This is located on seventeen hundred Park Avenue Southeast. They're currently in the county under urban development and looking to come into the city as light industrial. Is the applicant here tonight to speak on behalf of this application? Okay, anybody for or against this application? Comments? Okay, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, for application number twenty-five dash two zero zero three-three annexation request for tax parcel one-twenty-one dash one-one dash oh-four dash oh-oh-seven. Current zoning, urban development, proposed city zoning is light industrial. Say we move to city council for approval.
Second.
Okay, thank Commissioner Herb, second by Commissioner Matthews, discussion. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. And the motion carries unanimously. Okay, item D under new business, application number two-five dash two zero zero three-four. This is an annexation request for tax parcel number one zero six dash two zero dash zero five dash zero zero one. This is over on nine forty-eight Dougherty Road. They are currently in the county under urban development and looking to come in under general business. Is the applicant here tonight to speak on behalf of this application? Anybody for or against this application? Comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, in regards to application number two-five dash two zero zero three-four annexation request, tax parcel number one zero six dash two zero dash zero five dash zero zero one. Current zoning, urban development, proposed general business, and there are no possible conditions, I move that we send this to city council for consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner Matthews, second Commissioner Connor. All right, Herb, Herb. Okay, discussion. All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Like, sign, oppose, and the motion carries unanimously. Item E under new business, this is application number, excuse me, two-five dash two zero zero three-five an annexation request for tax parcel number one zero six dash one-six dash zero-two dash zero-one-four. This is over on the same address, uh, or it's right next door, nine-five-zero Dougherty Road. Currently under urban development, and this track is looking to come under residential, multifamily, low density. Uh, the applicant here tonight to speak on behalf of this. Okay, any comments, opposition, or in favor? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, in regards to application two-five dash two zero zero three-five annexation request for tax parcel one zero six dash one-six dash zero-two dash zero-one-four. Current zoning U D, proposed zoning R M L, I make a motion that we move to city council for approval.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clarkson, second by Commissioner Matthews. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. And the motion carries unanimously. Item F under new business, this is application number two-five dash six zero zero one-four. This is a rezone request of tax parcel number one-two-zero dash one-three dash two-four dash zero zero one. This is over on six-twenty Lauren Street Northwest. Their current zoning is general business and residential, single-family. Uh, they want to bring the properties under one zoning as general business. Is the applicant here to speak on behalf of this? Yes. Okay, anybody for or against this application? And is there any other comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, for application number twenty-five dash six zero zero one-four for tax parcel one-two-zero dash one-three dash two-four dash zero zero one. Current zoning is G B, proposed. Excuse me, yeah, current zoning is G B and R S ten. Proposed zoning is general business. But no conditions, I say we move city council for approval.
Second, thank you, Commissioner Herb, thank you, second Commissioner Clarkson. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. And the motion carries unanimously. Okay, our, under new business, item G and H. This application, this application number two-five dash two zero zero three-six, this is an annexation request. And with that requires a concept plan, so these applications are combined. This, the concept plan application is number two-five dash two-two-zero-zero-seven. These are tax parcels one-two-two dash ten dash thirteen dash double oh six and one-two-two dash fifteen dash oh-one dash zero zero one. Uh, the location is at one-eighty-one and two-three Thoroughbred Run. Current county zoning is residential, multifamily development. And the zoning annexation they're at, they'll be coming under as planned residential. I know the applicant is here tonight, so I'll let you come up and give us a brief summary of what you're looking for tonight.
Keith Lawrence, six-five-six Bent Creek Drive, Evans, Georgia, three-oh-eight-oh-nine. I know I got limited time, so I'll keep it concise. Appreciate y'all's time and considering the annexation and the, the concept plan. We're proposing three-hundred-and-thirty, uh, single-family and townhomes mixed together. We redesigned the, the lower portion to tie into Dr. Ware's track. Uh, we were excited with the opportunity. Um, I know you had a rezoning come forth before on this track and really tried to embody the same thing we did on the, um, summer all track and bring it forward. You know, we've got alleyways on the townhomes, we've got a mix of different townhome sizes, we've got alleyways for some of the hu, single-family. Extensive amount of parks, um, the, we're going to try to utilize the, the existing house. We're not sure right now, we've only had one pass at it. And then the Pecan Grove that's behind it and kind of go through there, uh, on that side. Walking trails, sidewalks, street trees, uh, are typical. I think we even talked about this one time before. County only lets us put sidewalks on one side of the road, we like them on both sides. Um, so there'll be a five-foot plan or five-foot sidewalk on that side. No connection to Thoroughbred, um, Run. It's just has a crash gate, which we briefly met with public safety, and I apologize. He's got a specific way he wants that done, so we're going to address it exactly the way he wants. Uh, we did meet with the HOA from Mallard Lake, and unfortunately, we're only able to meet with one resident from Sandalwood. We reached out to the HOA at Sandalwood but never got a reply back, but, um, uh, Bob, who's back here? Was it kind enough to give us a resident's name over in Sandalwood? Both meetings went well. We kind of went through the project. There's several of the residents are here. And then, uh, one of the things that they had asked is, was there any way to make a trail connection to, from their neighborhood to ours? And so with HOA approval on their side, we're going to make a trail connection to both those neighborhoods on that side, and then they'll be able to utilize the walking trails, uh, on there. So that would be all at our expense on there. Only thing we'd have to get is an easement granted by the HOAs on that side. The, uh, we do, we are asking for three waivers. Um, one is for the percentage of alley lots. We tried our best, and I think it's a thirty percent, only having thirty percent front loaded is really difficult on the townhome side, but we did really maximize, uh, the light blue color in there are all alley-loaded townhomes. Um, they also front a park on that side, um, the kind of the darker teal color are thirty-foot wide townhomes with front entry garages on there. So our percentage is, is not meeting the number, but we're close, uh, at forty-five-point-eight percent. And we also do, but we are, I think we give a little bit in that we've got a fifty-foot buffer at a minimum all the way around the entire property. Um, I know in the, uh, Sandalwood property, that was one of their big concerns, where her concern was making sure we maintain the trees on that, um, west side of the property. Second waiver was the driveway widths. Um, as I mentioned, the alleyway townhomes, um, one of the things we put a stipulation on ourselves is that those driveways have to be at a minimum of twenty-five foot deep off the edge of the alley so that a car can be outside of there and traveled. We're asking for twenty foot on those, and then while we are asking for twenty foot on the, the ones front-loaded, they actually are wider. They're, you know, they're thirty-foot wide townhomes. We would make it up in landscaping, uh, on that side and get the cars out of the streets. That's one of our concerns is if you, if you put a narrow driveway in there, they're just going to park in the street and clutter up that side. Uh, we can get a great facade look, and this will all be two-car garages, too, which typically is about an eighteen-foot door. We could probably skinny it down to eighteen minimum, um, with the double-car garage, but it would look, it would be, uh, it'd have to skinny down and swoop up to the house. It'd look a little funky if you only didn't have a, a wider driveway on that side. And then the last waiver was related to the, uh, required builders, building separation. Um, one of the ladies who worked with us did kind of study between the, the separation currently, what you guys have is a seven-and-a-half, well, total of fifteen-foot setback for a ranch house and twenty foot for two-story houses, but they don't address story-and-a-half houses. What we're asking for is to be able to do the, uh, the story-and-a-half houses, um, with the same, uh, total fifteen-foot setback by using cement fiber siding on the outside and then cement fiber siding on the eaves and soffits. I think that that's a, it's a more, it's a more, um, better class rating for the fire protection on that side. So I'd also be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Commissioners, I'll open it up if y'all have any direct questions for the applicant.
Well, before we get into any of that, um, I just want to make sure the public and everyone's clear. We're only approving, or we're only seeing part of this. It's not the entirety of it, so it's just the, that, yeah, that. I just want to make sure everyone's clear, we're only voting on part of this, not the entirety of it. That's, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Clarkson, that's good, good clarification. Okay, Commissioner Connor.
Separation between the units.
Mm-hmm.
This cementus fiber board you're suggesting using, is that only on the eaves and soffits? What would be below that?
It'd be the siding too.
Okay, so.
Yeah, in my opinion, I think you'd lose it if you don't do the siding as well. So it would be cement fiber.
Side as opposed to vinyl?
Yep. Yeah, and that, and we did make the case to the public safety, and you know, when we did, when we did the, presented the case, he just wanted the separation. But we think it's, you know, it's better fire protection, honestly, by having the cement fiber siding. A lot of people call it hardy board. That's actually.
It's a better quality material.
It is.
Well, in terms of the house.
We like it especially because it allows us to vary the, the house colors instead of what the palette that the vinyl, um, suppliers do. I think it's a, just looks like a nice.
I don't think anybody would argue about hardy plank over vinyl.
Yeah.
But I mean, with the request.
It's, it's required.
You're required to do it versus if you went wider, you could use vinyl.
That's correct.
So when you talk to, to police chief or the fire safety marshal.
Yep.
Have you considered a compromise between the fifteen and the twenty? Like a seventeen and a half? I mean, is that?
We did, I didn't really get much flexibility from, Maria was there. Um, it was.
I mean.
It was kind of all or nothing.
Yeah, I agree.
I, best way I could describe it. We tried, we made the case, but it really, I didn't even really get.
Yeah, they're, they're strong about that.
Yeah.
The safety of the individuals and everything else.
So we, we think it's a, we think it's a better fire protection on the spread side, because that's his always concern. And I, and a hundred percent, I actually sat through, uh, um, at Columbia County, was explained to how flammable current houses are versus a house that was built in the nineteen-seventies. In seventies, a house can last basically fifteen minutes before it's no longer structurally secure. Now it's three to five minutes. So I get it. And so the setback by seven, seven-and-a-half is really not a tight setback. I know Commissioner here disagrees with me on that, but that's fine. Um, but the, uh, having the material thing, I, to me, having the siding being cement fiber siding and the eaves is a better fire protection separating the buildings, in my opinion. But I am also not the fire marshal.
And we're not either, so we're, we're, we're just trying to get some clarity, but at the end of the day, it's up.
Out of curiosity, will there be, um, will you either allow it or will you be building fencing in between, um?
There, there would be fencing. Yeah, that's typically, I'd say, half and half is what people fence their houses on that side.
That would be up to the buyer?
It is. Yes, sir.
I just didn't, I wanted to make sure you guys would allow for it in the covenant.
Everybody's got a dog.
Okay. Any other comments?
The question, as, as I mentioned, uh, in the work session, uh, from my perspective, from a planning perspective, I have a, an issue with the, the side yard setback. I think ten feet on each side, a total of twenty feet. Looks better from aesthetically, it looks better from, now they call it light and air is the pre, planning principles. Uh, if you have various HVAC units on the other sides, it really gets that area tightened. Uh, and I would stress that we, we should, we'd look at that. Would you have any concerns in complying with this, this city ordinance?
No, I, I think if, if, if that's a, if it's a deal breaker, we'd rather not ask for that. We'd rather drop that waiver. We, you know, I mean, it's, it's justification. I, I particularly, I mean, Mario's worked with me some now. I, I don't like to bend the rules. Um, so if it, if it, if it seems like it's something that you guys would like, look, this is great, but this is our biggest concern. I, I don't, I, I don't have that, that concern. Thank you.
Okay, that'd ultimately be.
Glad to hear that because I know you got a long, this is just step one.
It is.
So, no sense in burning.
It'll ultimately, it'll ultimately be up to city council, um, in their review with the, um.
Yeah.
With the, um, fire marshal. So, um, uh, and you're aware of all the possible conditions, one through eleven of the applications, so you're comfortable with that? I figure you would. Okay. Other comments for the applicant from the commissioners? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. All right, uh, anybody else in here to speak in favor of this application? Yes, sir. If you'll come up to the podium and dress your, give us your name and address for the record. We'll give everybody, just so everybody knows, there's going to be a timer up on the thing for five minutes. When you get down to four minutes, I'll raise my hand, but we want to try to keep everybody's. That's fine. Okay, go ahead.
Butch Robertson, eighteen forty-two, Massillon Road. And first of all, I want to say I'm in favor of what Maybaum does. They do a great project. I'm in favor of that. My only concern is, and I see they have, I didn't know this before I got here tonight, they have their detention ponds, but we're getting flooded below these properties now. I met with city staff today. I've got some pictures here, if you don't mind, I'll pass them, let you guys can look at. So, um, there were several property owners today, Todd Stilt, myself, the Stacy's, the Fowler's. We met with city engineering staff. We talked about this. What we're getting is all the runoff out of Mallard Lake right now. And it's going down Thoroughbred to Woodward Ear Glen, underneath Powder House, and coming onto our properties and flooding it. So my only ask is that the planning commission understand that whatever we do in the future, as far as any of the property up there, that we take in consideration what's going to happen with the, the stormwater. The city started the, the connector road. Can we go back to that last slide?
The over, the overall slide?
Yeah, the one before this? Yeah.
Okay. Uh, let me, this is just his concept plan, but he's, he's going to be required to retain his own stormwater. He, he will not be allowed to dump any of his stormwater or his development on any neighboring properties. The DHEC won't allow it.
Well, I'm a little confused, Ryan, because we had the meeting with staff today, and the attitude was that any surface water, even though the water's going in the Mallard Lake, could be dumped into that bottom. So I'm a little confused. All I'm asking.
I understand. I, I understand. I understand. I I understand what you're saying.
All I'm asking is, as we go down the road to developing all of this land, we're getting much more water now and we're being impacted more and I would like you guys to.
That'd be fine. Typically with developments, they're they're required to retain their own stormwater and a lot of times these developments will improve some of the existing conditions that are there.
Right.
You know, once they're done, but they're not, I can't speak for what's there now.
Right.
But I certainly understand the concern and and we'll we'll certainly, these guys will have many steps they have to go through with DEHEC and city permit approvals to to maintain their own stormwater runoff.
And I've worked with Keith and his staff in the in the previous project and have no problems. They've stood up and you know, done what they said they were going to do.
I think they'll improve your situation overall.
Well, I hope so. And, you know, there's still a lot of things that, again, we discussed with city engineering today about additional ponds upstream. When they start to cut the the road through, but right now we're getting it from three different areas.
I got you. Understood. If you want to hand that, your package over to that. Uh, nothing. No, no, sure. Yep.
Thank you.
I'm gonna let the people speak tonight for every, everything. If y'all just take notes and then I'm gonna let you come back and address the items. You don't have to take detailed notes, but I'm just going to let you address positive. You're for the, you're, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, Fred Angel, two eight five, South Bank Drive. So there's a few of us here from Mallard Lake. I'm the president of the HOA. So I want to first thank Keith and his team for coming to meet with us last week and for the city for giving our information to them to reach out. So compared to the old Todd Bailey proposal, this is leaps and bounds better. I think he resolved a lot of our existing anxieties with the previous development, namely with the connection to Thoroughbred Run and really the overall separation with the community. So it seems like it's going to be a very well integrated approach with the rest of the Somerville development, which I think we were not going to get with the Bailey proposal. So I'm speaking off of the HOA. I'm sure others will give their opinions, but overall I support the development as proposed.
I appreciate you coming up. Anybody else in favor to speak? Yes, sir.
Hey, I'm Dr. Bob Van Pelt, three oh three, South Bank Drive. I'm part of the HOA board as well. And I'm in favor and I want to applaud the developer for reaching out and taking the time to talk with us and answer all our questions and our concerns. Okay? Really, it's unique and all developers should be asked to do.
Doesn't happen often, does it?
All right, really. I mean, it's very proactive. But this concept plan, as it laid out, it's excellent. Trying to preserve a lot of the green space, putting parks in, community garden, walking trails, biking trails, you know, just the way it should be done. And I think it actually supports what the Aiken Comprehensive Plan is trying to do. So again, all developers should be reading that as well. The one thing I want to make a comment on, as I mentioned the last time for that previous developer, was you have that cotton field with over twenty plus years of pesticides, herbicides. Again, the state of South Carolina asks when you go from agricultural to residential, in this case, to do your due diligence and just ensure that you don't have contamination in there in the upper four feet that would pose a risk to residents. And that's what we just ask on that. As well as during construction for the current residents around our area. So we ask for that. And again, lastly, the developer understands and has reached out and said, listen, while we're doing this and we get approved, please watch what we're doing. And if you see anything that you don't like, call us, talk to me and let me know. And again, I am in favor of this and welcome change. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else to speak in favor? Okay, yes, ma'am.
So this was a whole different ballgame and
I'm sorry, could you, could you give us your name and address? That's okay.
Debbie Brown, two nine two, South Bank Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Mallard Lake. So this was a really a welcome thing where people were working together and listening to each other. And the developer was very open to discussing anything. And that's how it should be. We just have to have a forum for doing that. And why that didn't happen with the hotel is beyond me. There's something that I discussed with the with the developer is that with the idea of trees, if we could work in a collaborative way with a tree expert to to choose the correct species and the correct planting areas, not just for the aesthetics, but for the long term use. In Mallard Lake, the original builder planted species that are way too large for the size of the homes. And now twenty-three years later, we're seeing it. So yeah, that would be, and he was, he was very open to that. It might be a good thing to go outside the city. I know the city has an arborist.
That's right.
And, but that turned out to be kind of a conflict of interest in other cases. So we asked the developer if he would be willing to work with somebody outside the government and he indicated he's good with that. And it happens that we have woodlanders. So that might be somebody who could be considered. Their daughter is, Michael Von Gray's daughter is a tree expert. So, I mean, there's other, there's other people too, but so that's the one other thing I'm concerned about is crime. I get these crime reports in the email and they show you a little map about where they're taking place and the type of crime and the distance from your home. I've been getting two a week in our area. And when I looked at it, and Lisa Smith put out a great map of all the different districts. It looked like a lot of the crime is happening in the donut holes. So I'm thinking, well, maybe our police don't need to work there. But the county police are too far away and there's only like two of them or three of them, right? So I think a discussion of the planning for crime as that area develops, not just for this development, but the whole area of what y'all have planned. So that's just a hunch on my part. I could be all wrong, but I think those donut holes should be looked at in terms of safety. Richard, did you, did you have an idea about that or? I saw you looking.
I I think, ma'am, with the donut holes, those are, the donut holes are, like you say, they're county. I think that's an ongoing struggle with the city to try to bring these donut holes. We can't force people to annex into the city. If you're a homeowner living in a donut hole, the city has no right to make them come into the city. That's completely up to them. Now, they've given they've given them cost benefits of coming in the city versus living in the county. But again, a lot of people don't want to live in the in the city and they're happy in those donut holes. So it's it's just going to be a conundrum the city's going to have to deal with for a long time. As far as crime goes, I think development like this will certainly help thwart a lot of that crime. That there's not a lot of open space there.
Yeah.
But I would encourage you to to certainly talk to Aiken Public Safety and the county sheriff if you are experiencing those those problems. We don't have any purview over crime here.
Okay.
So.
So I just wanted to bring it, I know that, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention in terms of the planning.
Well, yes, ma'am. I think that's why we're we're looking at things like this to try to help aid that situation.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else to speak in favor of this application? Okay, we'll entertain those here tonight that want to speak that are in opposition of this application. Anybody here to speak against this application? Any other comments? Okay, I'm a, I want the applicant to come forward and just address the flooding issues that that was discussed. I think I heard something about testing of the soil.
Yep.
And what was the third?
Fringes testing the soil and trees.
Trees. Okay, thank you. Take it away.
No, we actually just talked to Butch briefly before this. Stuart called me about that and Mac talked to him. We're actually, I will say you are correct that I was telling Butch that the new requirements are you have to release the twenty-five year post-developed at the two-year pre-developed. So you actually end up with a reduction in there now. That doesn't solve the water coming from Mallard Lake, but it would solve any water coming from this site. So it actually chokes it down. You know, we've been working and I think that I suspect the issue is because we we have had this happen. We've had some pretty heavy rainfalls and I suspect it's because that pond is not built fully.
Correct. That's correct.
That would be my guess.
This last month, this last month has caused quite a lot of problems with poorly designed areas.
I'll just tell this real, real quick because I'm ready to go, but most people don't realize that a hundred year storm is only, it's actually not supposed to happen every hundred years. It's a one percent chance. It can happen every year. It's one percent chance of happening every single year because we've had it and also can be short duration, high intensity can also cause hundred year storms because they can be localized on that side. So I've mentioned that. But we'll definitely work with Butch. Butch has been great. He's he's the reason that all this development happened. We tied on to the sewer at Sanctuary and brought it from his property up here on that side. Fred, I appreciate the kind of comments. Thank you very much. It's actually, we try to do this every time. I would, I would almost encourage like a mandatory to talk to the neighbors. I mean, because oftentimes it's it's the best thing to do.
We can't tell you how much easier the application process would be, not for us, but for the developers.
Yeah.
To to be proactive to your, be a good neighbor. And and that doesn't happen, and and I applaud you. I think the commissioners would applaud you and your team, regardless of how you feel about this development, for for your efforts to to be proactive.
Well, I mean, they're they're great people and a lot of times it's just a matter of just explaining the whole project of what's going on. Because we read plans. Y'all see plans every day. They, a lot of people don't. So just to take the time to go through, it's been, it's always been great. And I'm, I thank Bob for introducing me to the lady in Sandalwood because I had a great conversation with her. And then we are, we're going to be doing about nine tests at a minimum on the soil types. We'll distribute them through the site. That's going to be, we we just, I told Bob the same thing. We're not going to do it until we get past the zoning standards.
Sure, understood.
But once we do, on that side, we definitely are. And then Debbie mentioned about the trees. We're all about trying to find the right trees because there are some trees that do really well and there's some trees that are not suited for streetscapes.
I presume you'll have a licensed landscape architect that'll be designing.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a requirement y'all.
That's right.
But yeah, absolutely. But I think it's important. She she is encouraging us to try to look at some different types of trees and we do. We're always all about that. There's there's looking at the right trees. One of the ones that we're going to do at Clifton Place, for example, and that sounds bad, it's a sweet gum, but it's a non-fruit bearing sweet gum and it grows vertical. They're actually really attractive trees, so they don't. Do you have them out front? Okay. Yeah, they don't spread out. They just grow up. So something like that in tighter spaces works a lot better. But I think I think I got everybody.
I think so.
Regulations are written in a way, you know, at least for a purpose and what would in terms of requiring the thirty percent single facing or the garage facing units, what would that do to your plan if we did not approve that waiver?
I don't think I could do the plan. I actually, I I'm the planner on this one. I did this plan. And the only place on the townhomes that we don't, that we do not have alleyway is just on the outside edge. That's the only place. Everywhere else has alleyway homes.
Can you, yeah, I mean, I'm sorry. So. Okay, all right. So because they're on the perimeter, you're having a harder, there's no way to do that? And then what about the the separation? Is that just going to limit?
I mean, that's not to say we wouldn't still do hardy board anyways. Just to be perfectly honest with you, we generally do do hardy board. So if if the, if if it's a concern, that's definitely not a hill I would die on.
Is it, is it, in terms of your density numbers, do you have any idea with the difference? Is that what it would impact or would it?
No, it would change the the plans. You'd have to go with narrower plans to conform.
Homes, the design of the homes.
The homes would have to tweak a little bit. You know, those ones that I I included in the package were built with seven and a half foot side setbacks. But Columbia County doesn't recognize the difference. They just have a straight side setback and we thought they were really attractive houses. So in order to get it, you'd have to trim five feet out of the overall. Which in case may push some more to two story houses.
So if you were forced to go the twenty foot, you would not, you would still stay with the hardy board and.
We more than likely would probably stay.
Okay. But it's going to impact the design of the home.
It will.
Not your density.
Yeah.
There were concerns about.
We would not, yeah, I, the other option is to preprogram the lot sizes to be five foot wider, but that's so hard with with buyers with, when you're looking at it. So it was part of the plan to be able to build the houses kind of where they wanted to go in there. So we would just, if we did that, we would just have to have, have to have five foot narrower houses.
And is that waiver request, is it specific to a area as well or is that across the board?
We would do it across the whole board, but I, we, it only technically applies, I think, to the north side only. Am I right, Maria? Because we've, you already voted on the south side. Okay. Yeah, on that side. We we won't change the product type. I can tell you whatever, whatever we do on one is going to be the same on the other.
But I mean, in terms of your, your, in your professional opinion, you feel like with that waiver, you're able to put a more attractive house on the lot?
That'd be a tough one for me to argue, to be honest with you, that it's a more attractive house. I think that'd be an unfair statement. I can still make it a house attractive five foot narrower. It's just going to change the designs. I don't think I'd be, I'd be lying to you if I told you that.
I, and I just wanted to know if.
Sure.
Good questions. Any other questions for the, from the commission? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will entertain a motion and then we can get into discussion.
Chairman, I'll make the motion to regarding application twenty-five, I'll just read the tax parcel, tax parcel one two two dash ten dash thirteen dash oh six, oh six and one twenty-two dash fifteen dash oh one dash zero zero one. Regarding CSRA Development Company. And in terms of the annexation and concept plan, the current county zoning is RD, proposed city zoning is PR. I'd like to make motion that we send this to the city council recommending approval. However, in terms of the conditions, I'd like to strike number four concerning the waiver for the side yards setbacks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Messina. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second commissioner, okay, discussion.
Miss, Maria, what was the, because we already voted on the southern half of this, correct? What was the setback for those? Did we, did they ask for a waiver? Did we grant a waiver? Can you?
The memory serves. No, it's just standard.
It was just standard? Okay.
My my question would be, okay, so you're, or in terms of discussion. So the, it sounds to me that you don't get any benefit aesthetically. It's, makes it more convenient or based off the designs that they've chosen. But there could be a question of, at least from the fire marshal's standpoint, health and safety. And if there's no difference otherwise, I'd, I'd, I would defer to, I think, that fact. Which is why I asked. I mean, if you were telling me you were building, it it allows you to build a more attractive home. Aesthetically, there may be some benefit to that. But if there's not really and you can work a design that otherwise works within the limitations of the fire marshal in our current zoning, then.
Yeah, it's difficult for us to historically go against the fire marshal
Right.
as a commission. And that's just life safety.
We leave that to city council.
Now, I'm, I mean, yeah, we're just the volunteers here, so. But I mean, I'm a contractor by day, so I certainly understand flammability and the construction products. And I think they're night and day than what they used to be. And I think you could be side by side and still be okay.
Now, if you're telling me you're going to go with all vinyl siding.
Right.
Otherwise.
Makes a difference.
It doesn't make a difference and I I think that that's a lesser quality look and we don't want, you know, I would prefer.
I would agree with you. However, I I appreciate Commissioner Messina's view of of more space between houses is better. That's just an opinion, but I still think you can get an attractive house at fifteen feet. But I, it's it's just, it's just difficult for us to go against what the fire marshal says. But again, it ultimately will be up to city council.
My my comment then, because there is that availability and I'm, it sounds like you're a stand up guy. But I if we're, I do think that requiring that construction remain the same would be a condition I'd like to add.
You can do that. Pete, would you be amendable to him amending your?
That he'll do it more than likely, but I'd rather have the.
I think he'll do it more than likely, but I'd rather have the-
I understand.
Requiring the homes to be-
We're holding them to his word.
Well, no.
Are you agreeable to that as the applicant? And is that- yeah. So I understand. I understand where you're going with it, yeah. So Commissioner Connor, if you'll make a-
Well, I just would amend his motion to include-
Correct. You need to amend his motion. He's been seconded.
So I second his motion with additional amendment that the- while we deny the waiver, we do require or recommend to the city council that they approve with the requirement that the materials on the side, the faucets and eaves remain as indicated here made of the cementous material.
Okay, I agree with that.
Okay, I need a second. I need a second.
Or the number four, whatever.
I'll second that. Okay. So just for clarity, there was a motion by Commissioner Messina to grant the- to approve the application with the possible conditions listed, striking number four, was seconded. Discussion was had. Commissioner Connor therefore amended Commissioner Messina's motion to deny possible condition number four, but contingent on the fact that the construction of the facade would remain as the cementous backer board as listed in the narrative of the applicant, application.
That we would approve conditional upon that.
I want to make it clear that the city council understands what we're doing.
Right, so we're- my thought would be that we're granting the request with the addendums, with the exception of section, the last section, section four. However, we're recommending that the material that they utilize on the sides of the homes be the cementous material.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm confused now.
And I don't know if you-
I thought we were denying the- denying the request for the waiver to reduce the side yard setback.
We are. We're proving everything with the exception of that.
Number four.
Number four.
That's correct.
But I would like to add as a- I don't know if we do it as a general condition, that the- because we've got- Yeah. It might be easier to do it that way, is that we require that the materials on the sides of the homes retain-
Right.
-that material as described in the application.
Uh, Ryan?
Just a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
The sides is no problem. We typically would not do the eaves and soffits at a hardy board. If we're going to keep them separated, that would be the only thing I'd ask, is that we typically do vinyl on the eaves and soffits. The sides were definitely all hardy.
The siding.
What's that?
The siding would be cementous board.
Yes, the siding. The eaves and soffits, we would do- we would virate those if we brought them closer. That it's about a $7,500 add to the house to do the eaves and soffits on that side. So we're going to do hardy board. I have- you can put that as a stipulation. We have zero problem on the siding on that. It'll be hardy board, brick, stone mix.
Right.
It is. And then the only thing I would ask is just not to have it required on the eaves and soffits. If we're not granted, I mean-
Which is in the roof line.
Yeah, below, yes. If it comes off the roof and turns back to the-
That's correct.
That's the only place.
That's always vinyl.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And so what you're saying is you would do that with the closer, if we left the addendum four in there?
Yes.
Otherwise, you're just committing to doing the sides.
Correct.
But not the eaves and soffits.
Just because of the cost.
Right.
Because at the cost on that side, you'd be better off to make the lot five foot wider. That's where you come- that's where it comes down to on that side.
Okay.
Y'all have any opinion about that?
Fair enough.
I don't have a problem with the soffits.
Yeah, the soffits don't-
Less noticeable.
The people look at the siding of the house. They don't stare. And the owners look at that when they have a leak. I mean, so I don't have an issue with it.
I don't have a problem with that, as long as we get the commitment.
I want to make sure that you're- that it's clear on your condition, though.
And I don't care where you put it.
Okay.
I think it's probably easier to put it as a general one.
You can add a number 12. That's what you-
I think that's probably easier.
Right.
Okay, well, let's strike four and add 12.
That the siding of the-
The siding remains the cementous board that is listed in the narrative. Okay?
Right. Yeah, the siding of the units will be cementous board.
Correct. Okay, so I need a- so Commissioner Connor amended the motion and I need a second.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Clarkson. All right. Any other discussion from the commission?
Chairman, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. Oh, sorry. Especially to the developers, I think you all did a wonderful job. I am very impressed the way you have interacted with the public. But also, I'd like to say to the public for your comments, you all came in with your concerns, but you also add solution. And I'm very appreciative on both sides.
Thank you, Commissioner Matthews. Well said.
Yeah, and especially to the developer and thank you to the public as well. You know, I've seen a lot of- we all have seen a lot of developers bring things to us. And while I'm not party to the conversations between them and Miss Maria, I feel like after looking at some of their proposals, the conversation is, hey, Maria, what is the least amount that I can do? And that's what they bring forward to us. So I really appreciate not just the community involvement that you guys took the step to reach out to them, but I mean, you know, this is a much thicker packet than what we are normally given and just want to thank you for that. I know we're doing UDOs right now. We're looking at that. We're probably going to be bringing you up as the example of what we should be doing moving forward. So I just want to thank you.
Right, I actually want to add something to that. We do practice tell developers what they need to be doing, but they don't necessarily listen. I can just leave it at that.
I wasn't trying to make a knock on you, Maria. I know you lead them in the right way.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, so the motion is on the table to approve this application for city council with possible conditions one through 12, with four being struck and 12 requiring cementous backer board for the siding. All those in favor, raise your hand. The motion passes unanimously. Before we adjourn, I just want to take a minute to thank Mr. Matt Christian over there, our Aiken Standard News reporter, who's been with us for how many years, Matt? Three years. He's been diligently reporting on the city government, Planning Commission, DRB, and city council. And I'm personally and as Planner, Planning Commissioner Chair, I want to thank you for your reporting, for your fairness, your balance. You never took a side, but everything was factual. And in the era of fake news, that's refreshing to have. And I wish you well on your journey. Hate we're losing you, but I know your next venture, you'll do very well. And we'll give him a round of applause for your time here. So thank you, Matt. Okay, motion for adjournment. Second. All of them favor? We're adjourned. Thank you all tonight for coming.